Appreciate your patience. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate your patience and we will now begin the October 21st Town Council Meeting. Let the record read that the entire Town Council, to include the mayor, are present. Will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, one nation under God, individual liberty, justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, I'll ask if there's any, any public comment on any item on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll move on. Approval of the minutes of the September 16th Town Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the October 12th informational work session.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. So we'll move on to the, the Town Administrators' report. Holly, is there anything that stands out that you want to, you know, share with the council before they, I guess, if they have any comments?
Just a reminder, and I'm sure this will come up again, about the public hearing on November 9th. We are going to have an option to provide public comment in person, virtually, and by phone on that date.
Outstanding. Starting with Keith, is there any questions of the Town Administrator? I'll begin with you, Keith.
Let me see if. Sorry. Um, no questions. Thank you, Mayor. No questions. I just wanted to just highlight a couple of things that were in there that I thought were kind of neat, and that was the Free Little Library. That was kind of neat. I know we talked about that a little bit several years ago, so I'm glad to see that one up. And then also, the grants section, talking about some of the small parks, that's really neat, really neat work. So excited to see that. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. And Greg?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Holly, regarding item number two, regarding the Chesapeake Beach detachment, the issues over with the Naval Research Lab. Does the town have any current testing underway where we haven't received results yet, or are we through with the round of testing, whatever we're planning on testing for the, for the time being?
We've completed all of the testing that we had set out to complete. MDE did come on site, and we posted those results on our website recently. They came on site and again tested the town's drinking water sources and all resulted in no detect of any substance. So that information is posted. So to answer your question, yes, we've completed all of our testing at this very moment, but we will continue to monitor.
Are we engaged actively with MDE and MDE pushing the Navy to conduct all the testing that they need to do?
Yes, we've been in constant contact with MDE. We've provided them all information. They have a toxicologist that has reviewed everything and provided analysis and recommendations, which we've posted on our website as well. And yes, they've been a great partner in working with the Navy.
Okay, because I thought that MDE had said at one point that they were going to start testing some aqua, some marine life in the fall.
That's correct.
Okay, so do they have some things underway for that?
They do. My understanding is that they're not going to be testing marine life near Chesapeake Beach. They had identified several other areas, but they were going to use our testing to compare those other areas. So they were putting it in their pool of testing results. I have not seen the final locations at this time, but they initially told us Chesapeake Beach is not going to be included.
Even though we're right next to the Navy, to, to the site?
They stated that the levels that were presented in the results did not determine a reason for them to test further.
But isn't the Navy engaged in continued testing on flow into certain areas and then around Chesapeake Beach? And I know that we're not maybe specifically testing that, but the Navy is, and MDE does have jurisdiction over, and that's the one thing, they have jurisdiction over is enforcing those regulations. So wherever we are with that, I just, just encourage us to, and it sounds like we are, just pushing MDE to make sure that the Navy is forthcoming with that stuff. A lot of people were thinking about that. I had a question about the grants for projects $150,000 in value with the Board of County Commissioners. This is program open space. Is there any? Is, is there any, are there any funds there maybe that can be used for any of the improvements we've been talking about at Calhoun's?
Yes, a portion of that would, would be allocated there as we requested the, actually the access point. So that was considered to be an improvement towards the Calhoun's complex.
Okay, thanks, Holly. No more questions.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Larry?
A couple of my questions are already addressed. I just had one on the town permit activity. Holly, can you share any of the details of the 4055 Gordon Stenit scooter rental?
Sure. That is a business entity that is operating a rental of scooters off of the Marina West property. So they applied for use and occupancy to, they're basically renting scooters right from that parcel there.
Are these motorized scooters or?
They're electric.
Electric. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
My, most of my questions have been answered as well. Two things real quick. First of all, I'll probably repeat this as, as the night goes on. I'm very excited about the grants. Very excited to see some of our walkability projects included in that. Holly and I have been working closely on some of these projects, and I just want to, you know, give a shout out of thanks to you for helping get these on the, on the priority list. And then the Little Free Library, I'm bummed because I just offloaded a boatload of books, and some of them would have been appropriate to stock that, that width. So I might have to go dig up some others. Well done. That's it.
Thank you, Charlie. And Valerie?
Yeah, once again, I'm excited about the branding for the water tower. That's going to be a nice improvement to the town shortly. And then I just wanted to ask, does Walkability Committee have designs for the B Street Overlook and the 29th Street Taco Park, or are they still in like the design mode of what it's going to look like?
It's in a conceptual design mode. We had put together a design with Ben Dyer previously that Town Council had reviewed. So it's very just conceptual pre-planning. We will revisit again with Town Council.
So is that one that we previously reviewed when we got it from Ben Dyer? That's, okay. And then I didn't know if you wanted to say a little bit more about the October 23rd event? It doesn't have a timeline.
October 23rd Halloween movie night event? Yes. Sure. So it's going to be an exciting evening for town residents and their guests. And this is really a project of the Calhoun's Revitalization Committee to make more open space available for town residents. We are going to have pumpkins for the kids when they leave. There'll be a straw amphitheater set up for the children to sit on. We're asking residents to bring their own chair or blanket as well. We will have Calvert-Cavalcorn Kona Ice also available. So I think it'll be a nice neighborhood friendly, family-friendly event for citizens.
That sounds great. You did a great job of explaining it, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. We read the report. Does anybody have any, any questions? For Jay, I'll begin with Valerie.
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
You, Charlie?
No, I have no, no questions.
And Larry?
Just a question under the first item on a water leak. It seems like we're regularly having water main breaks, and I wonder if there's any idea why and anything the town can do.
Jay? I think you're on mute.
I see him out there.
Thank you, Holly. Sorry. Thank you, Larry. Yeah, we, they seem to come in phases after we flush. The ones that are caused by electrolysis, that's where the saddle is failing. Two different materials, I'm sure you're familiar with it, Larry. Stainless and bronze. We're putting anodes and also chemicals on there that will prevent that from happening. Again, some of the other ones are failing because of acid acidity in the soil. And we, we take lime and different things. Most of it's too acidic, but we also put those back with total bronze saddles, no two different chemicals, so they last longer. But unfortunately, that's going to be the nature of the beast going forward for a while, especially in Richfield Station. It's acidic soil, and that's what was installed way before my time. And, but moving forward, we're using a lot more HDPE, no copper lines and different things moving forward. So we're on them, but there, I'll be honest, there's going to be, you know, 10 to 12 every year. That's just the way it's been since I started.
Okay, thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Marth?
Yeah, Jay, I was wondering if you could elaborate on the surveys and storm drains update there. I know that several of us had met down there at Calhoun's, and we kind of walked through the area down there. And you walked us through some of the problems. Really, frankly, some of them really can't be solved, in my opinion. But I was just wondering if you could elaborate, you know, on what's been happening down or on that front. So I think that was something that we were waiting on to continue planning, some of the proposed ideas there.
Jay, you're on mute again.
Am I, am I there now? Can you hear me? Okay, I think it's, maybe I'm timing out, so automatically put me on mute. But, um, while Crandall was in town working on the spoil site, Greg, I walked over there with David, one of their field guys, and I'm asking for some budgetary numbers on that one proposed storm line, if you remember that you and I and Holly had walked with Charlie. Just to get some budgetary numbers on that, I went to the outfield, outfall side. That's going to take some coordination with MDE. I've talked that with Wayne. So it's basically trying to put together a budgetary scope of work and then see when we would implement at least that part of it to alleviate, I'm going to say, the known problem we have. The rest of it is still on the table to look at and see how far and how far we want to take it.
And that one line that you refer to, that's, once it's determined, you know, the, the front side and the backside, it's just running some plastic pipe, isn't it?
It is a little, but I also met another contractor out there that did the original ones, and it's a little bit more entailed. They have to install some stone under that pipe and maybe even some piles as they get to the northern end. It's 440 foot. And I'm sure at the outfall, they're going to make them install a stormwater catch basin. That's the same, that's on the two existing pipes. So there's a little bit more to it, but in theory, it is a straight line, one pipe, 24 inch running through the middle of that field. So it should be able to get some budgetary numbers and come together sooner than later.
I appreciate your continued efforts on that. Did you, did you say piles under pipe?
Yes.
What is that?
To support the, the pipe on the end where the outfall would be, concrete head wall and all that, might have to drive some piles to support that.
Okay, gotcha.
When we were lacking that, Greg, on the, on the first one, and I think that's a little bit of the reason why the outfall pond and certain things settled on it.
Yeah, understood. Well, look, thanks for the update. Looking forward to moving forward in however capacity we're able to. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And Keith?
Thanks. No additional questions. Thanks, Jay.
Sure.
All right. Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Report. We read John's report, beginning with you, Keith. Do you have any, any questions for John?
Let me just take a quick look here, see if I noted anything. Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, very good. Greg?
No questions for me. Thank you, John.
All right, Larry?
As usual, just again, congratulations. No bypasses, no spills. And John, I just had a question that we, an item we discussed several months ago. Any update on possible solar panels at the plant?
Um, well, we were looking to, I did want to do, finish this audit first, and then we're just started the RFP to put the covers on. And then once we pick out a design for that, I'm hoping to do the same kind of design that we did on the other parts with a catwalk over it and the mats. Then we might be able to look into some, some solar panels after that.
Got it. Let me know if I can help, John. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Charlie?
No, Larry and I talked earlier, and I helped Larry with his question, so we're good.
Okay, Valerie?
Um, no questions. Thanks.
Okay, very good. Next, Code Enforcement Report. Unfortunately, due to family reasons, Connie sends her regrets that she cannot be in attendance. If we have any questions, email them over to Holly, and she'll coordinate with staff to get you an answer. Thank you. Town Treasurers' Report. Dale? We've read Dale's report. Do we have any questions of Dale? I'm sorry. And I'll start with Valerie.
Uh, yeah, so I noticed that we're going to be having the budget reconciliation coming after the audit. And so I usually ask each year, is there any sort of surprises that we might expect?
Um, no, Valerie, not from the initial analysis. I still have a lot of work to do once the audit's complete.
Fantastic. And then secondly, on the American Rescue Plan Funds, what was that amount again?
Uh, 2.9 million, and that's 50% of what we'll receive. We'll receive the other 50% mid next year.
Correct. And so I know there was quite a large document on how those funds can be expended, pages upon pages. And so are there specific areas that the town is looking at in using those funds?
Honestly, we are really in the early stages, but we're going to do some work and then bring that to Town Council in the next couple of months.
Um, one thing I would like us to consider is, um, we know that the water park was greatly affected during this year. And so it'd be really good to have a, just a small analysis of what it appears to be, whatever deficits were created by the shutdown. Because I'm thinking that that would be something that might be specifically COVID-related, and therefore we ought to make, I'll just say, the water park budget whole again, if at all possible, based on what losses were garnered. So it's just something I'd like us to consider. And any other sort of direct COVID-related costs that we had. Whatever we can do to make the town whole again in any of our areas, that would be really good. And that's all I had. Thanks, Dale.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, I apologize if I missed this, but can you tell me what the DNR grant was, was, how did that come about?
Holly can answer that one.
Yeah, would you like to take that, please?
Sure. This is the funds that were received for the dredge rehabilitation containment.
Okay.
From the grant process.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
Very good. Larry?
No additional questions for Dale. Thank you.
Okay, and Greg?
Sir, good evening, Dale.
Good evening.
Welcome to Town Hall this evening. I was wondering, the American Rescue Plan Funds, could you elaborate a little bit on those, on where we're at with, with those funds?
Yeah, Greg, we've received the funds, the first 50%. We're going to get the next 50% mid next year. We have a number of years to spend these funds. Don't want to top my head, I think it's 2026. So I have been really consumed with the audit. They've been working with us since Labor Day, and they're wrapping up very soon. Once that's complete, I'm going to spend a lot of time, you know, working on it for Town Council.
Yes, sir. I appreciate what you said there. Thank you. I want to put you on the spot here, though, and this is a loaded question for you, and it's really just to be considering moving forward for all of us these upcoming months. We'll be moving into a new budget season after the first of the year. Is the town of Chesapeake Beach overly dependent on gaming revenue for normal operations?
Overly dependent, like, do we have to have it?
Yeah.
I think the answer, I'm going to interject here and kind of help out. I think that, you know, the answer is basically the, the percentage of our, of our operating, the percentage of our budget that comes from that revenue. And Dale, isn't it, but isn't it like 20 or maybe a little over 20%?
Around 20%, yes.
And that would define, Greg, how, how dependent we are, if it's one-fifth of our, of our revenue.
Yeah, I know it's a little bit of, I don't know, I don't want to say spoken ears, but like that, that, you know, that particular money, in my mind, you know, certainly should be spent on, you know, upgrading public facilities and these kind of things, you know, things that are not, you know, part of our general operations, just on paper. That's all. But it's something that I definitely wanted to explore a little deeper in this upcoming budget season. So I wanted to mention it to you. Now you've got a lot on your plate, Dale, and then you'll get through that stuff. We've got, we've got, you know, several months ahead, but I think it's important for us all to be thinking about that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Keith?
Yeah, just one request. Could I get a copy for the American Rescue Plan Funds, what we are allowed to spend that on again, that, that report? Could you send that to me?
Will do.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I'd like to see that too, Dale.
Okay, absolutely.
Hey Dale, just, just have Holly send it to the entire council and, and me.
Will do.
Okay, no. Okay, Town Engineers' Report. We've read Wayne's report. Do we have any questions of Wayne? I'll begin with Keith.
Yeah, I do not have any questions for Wayne. Thank you.
Okay, and Greg?
Yeah, Wayne, thank you for being in attendance this evening. Do we have any update on the, the beginning of the build out there in Richfield Station at the Trailhead? I know the town worked through some public works agreement stuff a few months back. Is there any update that you're aware of?
I don't have any, Greg. I know the last I talked to them, they were still working on record flats. And I don't know if we've seen any construction start.
Okay. And I heard something the other day that was stunning. Heritage is close to 100% built out?
I don't know. I wouldn't track that. Maybe, maybe a planning administrator question for permits.
Is there somebody that knows for sure? I heard that, and I'm not surprised. Jay?
Right. Yeah, it's, it's definitely not 100% built out.
Okay.
Or, or even close in my mind. Are they past halfway? Yes.
Yeah, they're really moving at a fast clip. I mean, I know, once you get all the infrastructure in, it's just building those houses. But anyway, everybody's got their eye on that, of course. And I think I was going to ask you about Calhoun's. Wayne, are you involved at all? I guess you're working, be working with Jay a little bit with some of the stormwater issues we discussed earlier?
I am, and we're also working with the Flood Resilience Group to put together a plan for that, Greg.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, thanks. Hey, Wayne, maybe for next month, if you could give us some updates on some of the items that are in your report, you know, Richfield Station, last date in there is July, 261 sidewalks, review will proceed, heritage, and so on. Wesley Stenit Water Study says waiting for final direction. From whom?
I think there was some discussion about the moving forward with that project or not, Larry.
Okay.
Waiting for that direction.
Okay. Well, if you could just update some of those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, will do.
Thank you, Larry. And Charlie?
Well, I guess I have to pick up for my recently departed colleague and, and just sort of ask about timing on the 261 sidewalks. You know, when do you think next steps will happen? Do you have any kind of timeline?
We have completed 30% plans from the consultant. I had one comment which they are addressing, that it will go to the state highway for review. We, we were awarded, I believe, probably confirmed the 100% funding for the next phase of the zone.
That's correct. And we have a kickoff meeting the first week in November on that 100% design grant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Valerie?
Uh, no, no questions. All my questions have been answered. Thank you.
All righty. Next is the Deputy's Report. We've read that. I don't, if Lieutenant Hollinger is on the call, I'll begin with Valerie, if she has any questions.
Um, I just have two, or one, one to comment. So I understand that there was a robbery at the gas stop a few days ago. It's my understanding that there's somebody that's been accused. Is that correct?
Uh, yes. They, our detectives found a suspect and arrested and apprehended him, and he is currently being incarcerated.
I want to thank you for that. And
You're welcome.
There's probably not really any advice that we can give to our residents about their safety and going to some of these establishments, but, you know, just my advice would be, be aware of your surroundings, I suppose. Was it between 4:30 and 5:30 in the morning, correct?
Uh, I think the call came in at 4:51 in the morning.
So these people are ready to go to work and what have you. And so I just want our residents to be aware of, you know, their surroundings when they're pumping gas or what have you. Just be careful. My second one, what do you do in the track? There seems to be quite a few assaults going on. There's five. And so I assume something that the police department is tracking the trends therein. And if there's anything we as Town Council can do to support your efforts, please let us know.
Absolutely. I think, I think a majority of the assaults are at the establishment set, like ABNERS, and they've been pretty, pretty normal, ABNERS, rod and reel, back and forth between there. I guess patrons getting intoxicated and things of that nature.
Yeah, it still doesn't make it any, like, less concerning.
Right, absolutely. Yes.
And that's really all my comments on the piece report. Thank you very much for your efforts and your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Charlie? And Larry?
My questions were asked by honorable Dean, and thank you for your service.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And Greg?
Yeah, I don't think we could thank you enough. Probably can't say enough about Beach detail over the past 25 years I've lived here in town, frankly. I know that it's, it's an extension of Sheriff's Department leadership at the county level, too, which is something that should be underlined. We appreciate all that you do. It's, you know, let your, your colleagues know that we care about all of you and stay safe. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
Thank you. And Keith?
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to follow up on the assaults a little bit. Those are, to my recollection, on, I think, six years now, the most assaults I've seen in one report for the town. I think the hot, hot next has in one month. And I was just curious if you had any more insight, or is this something you've seen across the county or, or what? I mean, you had mentioned ABNERS and, and the rod and reel, but it says CVS Northeast Community Center, Gordon Stenit Avenue.
And a majority of the, majority of assaults aren't unknown to each other. They're known to each other. They're ongoing issues, citizen on citizen, but they know each other. So it's not like Joe, Joe Smith is walking down the street and somebody jumps him and beats him up kind of thing. They know each other, and it stems They know each other and it stems from something else. So it's not, I mean, it's still concerning, but it's not like somebody is just being jumped and beat up by somebody they don't know. It's stemming from other things that they get assaulted for.
Okay, all right. All right. Well, thank you for that additional information and appreciate your efforts.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Keith, and thank you, Lieutenant. Next, North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. As always, if we have any questions, send them over to Larry. He'll try to get you an answer.
Mayor, could I offer one comment?
Please do, sir.
I just wanted to share with everyone that on Friday, October twenty-ninth, at the firehouse, we're going to be hosting a trunk or treat from seven to nine at the firehouse. It's going to be fun activities, games, candy, base painting. Come on over. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Quick, quick question for Larry on this, if you wouldn't mind. Yeah, thank you. Larry, I saw there's a note down here for this gun bash. Do you all have a date for that yet?
Uh, it was already held.
Oh, no.
No, it was not in person. It was not an in-person event. You were buying tickets for the various raffles and then afterwards they were raffled off, so.
Well, I know I was looking forward to attending the next one that was live, so if you could make sure you keep me in the loop when that happens, I'm looking.
Will will do.
Okay, thanks. Next is the mayor's report. Which is a good one. I have a lot of good stuff to talk about. I'm happy to report that the town is returning to normal a little bit. Yeah, this Saturday, we're having a Halloween movie with Kellums Field with music before the event. I want to thank the town staff. I also want to thank Councilman Morris and Fink and and the Kellums Field Revitalization Committee. I we're moving forward. We're planning a a safe light-up-the-town event, which is the Sunday after Thanksgiving. You kick off the Christmas season, and I want to thank Larry and Holly in that regard, and of course, in advance, I'll thank the town staff. Jay, you guys do wonders every year. Thank you. We we will vote later on in the in the meeting on the twenty twenty-two fireworks, so that's that's all good stuff, seeing we're, you know, coming out of our shell a bit. And and another note, and it was brought up here before, is the town received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar state grant from from the state for program open space. I'm going to take this time to first thank Delegate Mark Fisher. You know, quite frankly, you know, up in Annapolis, and I'm a little bit in tune with what was on up there. It's pretty crazy during session and when, you know, money's going here, going there, being delegated there. And when Delegate Fisher saw that there was a million dollars being designated to Calver County for this open space thing, he he jumped right on it, and and he worked to earmark three hundred thousand of that million for Chesapeake Beach and North Beach. And I applaud Mark because he was successful. I also want to thank the Board of County Commissioners, who readily agreed. President Buddy Hans was was totally on board with the with this, even though in theory they did not have to release that money, you know, to us, but they did. And something that, I really want to thank Mayor Mike Benton. When all this was going on, and this is, this is, if you imagine when session was, we're talking, you know, going back to last March. You know, Mayor Benton and I have been, you know, on top of this and following it, and Mike, to be honest with you, Mike bird dogged this issue. Mike was following that three hundred thousand, one fifty his, one fifty ours. He he was following that, it seemed like, every week we were talking about it. I have to give Mike all the credit to ensuring that that amount of money, which is small by state budget, you know, standards, that it did make its way from Annapolis to Calver County and over to Chesapeake Beach and North Beach. So I really want to publicly thank Mayor Benton. And that's all I have. No resolutions and ordinances. Reports, planning a zoning. We've read Larry's report. I don't know if Larry's on the call or not. If we have any questions, you can send it over to Holly and she'll try, she'll try to get some answers for you. No Board of Appeals hearing. Seabox, I don't know if Mr. Bacon's on the call or not?
Yes.
I'm here.
Okay, John, you got anything to add?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. As you can see, we're having trouble getting our oysters spat from the Maryland Growing Oysters Program. Our opinion is that we will never get more oyster spat from that program. The reason is that the aquaculture users are grabbing up all of the larva from the hatcheries because they were, they like to pay for it. And the hatcheries like to receive their money versus MGO program, which is free. So we were at the threshold of canceling our oyster program when we decided to talk with Bobby Abner, who has his own hatchery right behind his restaurant. And at that point, we said, can we use your hatchery if we buy some oyster larvae, which is only three hundred dollars for a million? And he said, absolutely, you can use my hatchery. So we have made arrangements to use his hatchery two times this year, this next year. So we will be planting two million oysters in the bay this next year to go along with the one million oysters that we have been planting for the last ten years. So we have really been able to revitalize the, we will be able to revitalize the oyster program, which I'm very, very, very pleased about. The situation with the Calvert County fifth graders has been very unique this year. For the first time in ten years of hosting a program, we had students get sick. And there were three students that got sick on the same day. And one of them had to be transported to the hospital. But I'm happy to say that they have all recovered and are back at school. The other problem that we have had is there apparently is a school bus driver's strike. Or walkout, or sit out, or whatever it's called. And that has been following up all of the field trip, bus trips. So we're trying to recover from that, and it looks like we're going to be able to finally recover, but it's going to take us into the middle of November before all of the schools can get back up here. I want to tell you this, that last year when Ron Draper passed away, I was really concerned that the oyster program for the fifth graders would not survive. However, I am really happy to tell you that a large, a significant number of Seabox people, and I've listed them on that report, they would be Sue Alexander, Megan Blake, Linda Draper, Ron, Larry, and Melanie Crowder. And Mike Flame and Amanda and Dennis Brown have really stepped up. And we've been able to hold all of the programs and make it a success. In addition to that, several of our members have now become teachers rather than just facilitators of the students. And we're really happy about that. They passed through the classes that were given by the Calvert County Natural Resources Department. So it looks like our two major programs, restoration and fifth graders, are going to continue in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Climate change, Larry?
Several things to share. First, the Climate Change Advisory Group is going to work with town staff to seek designation from Sustainable Maryland. We were not able to get that this year. Our neighbors in the north, North Beach did, so we will work with every.
I'm sorry, we are sustainable certified.
I didn't see it in the report, and not our report, the MML report on Sustainable Maryland.
Oh, those were new certifications.
Ah, thank you. We will, we'll continue to work on trying to sustain our Sustainable Maryland Award. A group of us are working with staff on flooding and sea level rise. We received a grant from DNR for that. And we had a meeting a week or two ago. We're going to have monthly meetings on that, move forward with putting that plan together. I am working on scheduling a meeting with North Beach, who received the same grant. Just to coordinate our efforts to make sure that we know what each other are doing on that. And then on Monday, yes, this coming Monday, there's a town hall with Senator Ben Carton on climate change, and I will be participating in that. Co-chair, Pardik, anything to add?
No, thank you. Great job. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, Larry. Stay where you are. Economic EDC.
EDC. As Holly mentioned in her report, the comprehensive plan is moving forward. I consider that to be a critical part of economic development for our town on what that comprehensive plan is going to hold for the future. I participated in the question and answer session last night. There were twelve participants there. It was a good discussion. Christian Kubiec is doing a great job on on handling that stuff. And as Holly mentioned in her report, there is a public hearing November ninth at seven PM. Just for the record, I want to get out there that it's critical that voices be heard from residents and our businesses. So please, please, please plan to participate in that public hearing November ninth at seven PM. Co-chair, Morris, anything?
Oh, yeah, I'd just like to remind everybody that the town's throwing a Halloween movie at Calum's October twenty-third. That should be interesting. Looking forward to that. There's a lot of information on the town website about it. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you folks.
Go ahead.
Curious if you guys have heard anything about, and and if you haven't, it's fine. I'm not looking for rumors, something concrete about Mama Lucia's. I had heard that there, that that the sale maybe hadn't gone through. And I just didn't know if that was something you guys were in the loop on or were aware of at all, working on at all.
Not aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Green Team, Valerie?
Uh, yeah, just a few things. First of all, I'd just like to thank the Green Team and some of the recent events that we've had. In the recent past, we've had paddle and pathway pickup, which was a joint effort with the Northeast Community Center, where we sent paddlers along the creek to pick up litter. Then we helped through donations from Windmill Farms Less. We planted the Seventeenth Street, or the Fourteenth Street Garden, Rockwall Garden, or Seventeenth Street, excuse me. And then just a little bit ago, we refinished or refurbished, refreshed the pollinator garden. We put new plants in there, leaf grow, and it looks like it's going to be happy and healthy. I'd like to announce something that's going to be happening in the spring, because it's kind of exciting. It's going to be March fifth at the Northeast Community Center at ten AM. It's going to be Sam Droge. And if you don't know Sam, he's a wonderful speaker. And the television presentation is saving native bees, your yard, your garden, your community can plant a difference. And he's quite engaging. And so that's going to be in March, and we'll be talking more about that. And so for now, our next meeting is Thursday, October twenty-eighth at seven PM in Town Hall. So I'll repeat that one more time. It's October twenty-eighth, Thursday, seven PM in Town Hall. And if you're in Town Hall, you're required to do social distancing and wear a mask, but we encourage you to come. And so I'm just really happy with the energy and the group that is the Green Team, and that's all.
Thank you, Valerie. Greg, Kellums Revitalization?
Yeah, the town's having a Halloween movie at Kellums Park on October twenty-third. Six thirty, and I just, I'm not trying to be funny about that. I know that I like the addition of Kenny Holmes down there at five thirty. It should be an interesting night. So again, looking forward to that. Regarding anything else regarding changes at Kellums, I know that the town, we discussed some of that stuff earlier in earlier reports. Town's exploring alleviating some some obvious water issues so that we can kind of move forward with the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig, and thanks for what you do. Keith, Twin Beach opioid abuse awareness?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we have not had a meeting since last month, so not much to report. I'll just say that we are planning to have a meeting in November, and we've started just having some informal discussions about the the health fair, which we hope to have, you know, towards spring. And, you know, we really see that as really kind of a town event, and we we welcome participation from the other, the other committees. You know, especially, there might be opportunities there for the Walkable Community Committee to you know, help plan some of the events around that, so that would be great. And that's all I got. Thanks.
And and Charlie, Walkable Community?
Yeah, so I have a little bit to report here. I want to start by talking about our coordination with with Kellums Committee. So, you know, Greg has done quite a bit to move some of the ideas forward, and he mentioned we have been on a couple of field trips and we're learning a lot. I'm learning a lot anyway from from Jay and and some of the conditions out there. But if you take a look at that, the report from Holly, some of the funding that we receive is going to apply to projects that that are are a tie-in between some of the walkable projects and Kellums projects. And there's a lot of tie-in there because they're both promoting, you know, some of the same activities, people getting outside, walking, having a destination to walk to, and having something to do with that great public space, Kellums Field. So I think it's neat that we've got a little bit of, I hate to say this word because it's a biz speak word, but we have some synergy between our two groups, and and I think that's useful to point out. We've had, our committee has met twice, and also I've been working very closely with Holly on a handful of projects. I'm not going to run through all the details on that, but I'll just let folks know that some of the big, we've kind of broken projects into two groups, things that are, that are significant enough and for which we we don't have a foundation, a funding mechanism, or we really need to work through approval processes to to get those projects going. And so we've got a list of those and some of the activity that we need to do to usher that forward. The connection between Horizons and Seagate is on that list. The, some level of hiking trails in behind Fishing Creek, possibly extending Fishing Creek Trail are on those lists. And Safe Crossings, which was one of the most important projects for the public, is on that list. Just to clarify that, the Safe Crossing projects, any crossings that we do that cross two sixty-one, Holly, feel free to jump in and correct me here, require a fair amount of involvement and approval from State Highway. We don't own that that road. There are some other crosswalks that we're going to do some immediate work on that run parallel with two sixty-one, but not across it. Some other immediate projects that we're working on have already been mentioned tonight, that we work at Kellums, all of the park space, and also a couple of walkability connector projects, particularly the one that connects the parking lot to Twenty-Sixth Street and and making that a safer generally recognized place for people to to cross in and out of the parking lot, rather than the Billy Goat, Billy Goat Trail that it is now. So that's just a brief summary, and I'll wrap up by saying that we will be holding our next meeting on Monday, twenty, wait, let me make sure I get this right, twenty-two November, seven PM. That meeting will be open to the public, so as you, you know, members of the public, encourage you to take a look at the the projects that we're actually moving forward on. Feel free to give us feedback, attend that meeting. It will be on Zoom. Our last meeting was was outside at Kellums Pavilion, and everyone thought it was too cold. So I guess that time of year again, we'll be moving back to Zoom, at least for the immediate term. I think that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. No unfinished business, new business. Town Council to consider awarding a contract to Bailey and Shep Electric in the amount of thirty thousand from the FY twenty-two Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Capital Improvement Budget. to replace and test the bus bars at the WRTP. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll begin with Keith.
No, thank you.
Does anyone in the council have anything?
I just have something to add.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, um yeah, John, I know that this was a unique spec. The town's faced with unique specs, a lot of different areas. When we're putting things out for bid, and I would just continue to urge the town to work as hard as it can diligently um in in getting bid coverage um for some of these items. It's not all about sometimes getting the cheapest price, but it's also about wading into professionals and improving the ideas that we have for fixing some of these things. So um thank you.
Mayor, just a comment?
Yes, please.
Uh just a comment. Uh just as we discussed during the uh work session, it's important for everyone to realize that this repair is critical to the continued operation of the plant and prevention of spills and bypasses. Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you, council. Next, uh Town Council to consider extending the contract of Shafer fireworks in the amount of $22,500. Total cost is 45,000, however, a 50% deposit has already been paid from FY20 for the 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 July 3rd, 2022 display, and 29,500 to Smith Brothers for two barges for the July 3rd, 22 display. The range date will be on July 9th of 2022, not 21. Um and yeah, this this all came in after the the last work session, so we 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 did not want to wait. We want to to put it right on here. So I'll begin council's discussion with, well, first I'll answer, we have a motion to approve. And after a second, I'll I'll take discussion.
Move to approve.
Is there a motion to approve? I'm I'm having I'm having trouble hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, uh beginning with Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So um I mean, I think this looks good. I'm really hoping we can finally have fireworks again here in 2022. I don't think I have any uh any concerns here on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Greg?
Yeah, I'm just to kind of paraphrase what what um Holly has there. Um the last time we had actually had fireworks, boy, I can't even remember. It's it's kind of like avoiding my memory a little. Um was it 2020? Was it 2019?
2019.
It was 2019.
So um in essence, uh we haven't lost any money with our contracts, right?
That's correct.
And so and 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 we've kind of locked in those prices by carrying these things forward, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that that's just a comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And thank you for what that up, because I I want to take, I I want to thank Holly for her uh persistent and successful negotiations in that matter. So thank you, man. Uh Larry?
Uh no questions, other than looking forward to sitting on my deck and watching the fireworks. Thank you.
And Charlie?
I am looking forward to sitting on Larry's deck and watching the fireworks.
And Valerie?
I'm just glad we're getting the contractors to perform at their contracted rate. No questions.
Valerie?
Very good, okay. Is, okay, uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Hooray for fireworks. Uh at this time, I'll ask if there's any any public comment?
Yes, I have a comment or a question, Mr. Mayor, and that is, when will the dredging actually start?
I'll let you handle that, Holly, if you have any idea for him.
Sure. So the Fed, federal government is going out to bid on the work. Um it was supposed to take place in October that they were going out to bid. I have not heard that the bid's been released yet. I don't have a date for for the dredge. And Wayne, if you if you have a better date, please, please fill in, but I have not received one.
Holly, I don't have a better date. Um we expected all along they would uh start that dredge in the first quarter of 2022. But having not seen the contract come out yet, I'm not sure that's they're on the same timeline. But that was what the expected date was, probably April, May or June, when we met with them.
The town has.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, um I was just gonna add that the town has completed the dredge rehabilitation project. That is complete, work is is done, so we are good and and they can move forward.
Mr. Mayor, the reason for the reason for the question was, when there's dredging, Fishing Creek becomes filthy dirty, and that would affect the water quality measurements that our students are making. So I guess we won't have to worry about that for this year.
Okay, uh thank you. Is 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 there any other public comment? Having said that, uh Council Lightning Round, I'll I'll begin with Valerie.
Oh yeah, just two quick items. Uh first, I'm really looking forward. I was asked to speak to a Cub Scout troop tomorrow evening, so that's gonna be quite fun, as fifth graders ask me questions. And then once again, I'll reiterate that the comprehensive plan will be discussed in a public hearing where you are more than encouraged to attend and ask questions and let your voice be heard on November 9th at 7:00.
Thank you. And Charlie?
Yeah, I encourage, I I echo Valerie, number one, that you can't emphasize how important that is uh to get out and uh make sure you're looking at at the plan and 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 get involved. Uh then I want to also encourage everyone to come out on Saturday. Uh the weather should be great. Uh it's also an opportunity really to show support for making this space more useful to town residents. And it it's really an asset. It 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 may be rough around the edges right now in terms of how it's used, but there's so much opportunity, so much green space there. And uh you know, we can't, we can't do the best to use that space without hearing from everyone uh as to how to do it. So um please get out, and it's it's not just an opportunity to go spend an evening with your family and see a movie and sort of celebrate fall. Chance to uh be around that space, have your own ideas about how we could use it and and provide that feedback. So I look forward to uh having a good turnout. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Yeah, I I think as everyone knows, I serve as the town representative on the board of the Chesapeake Beach Railway Museum. And hopefully, as you all know, we've just completed a very extensive renovation of the uh railway station there at the museum. So come on by and check it out. And I will be working with Holly and the mayor to um set a date for the council to go visit uh the museum and see the new renovation. So we'll be working on that very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And Greg?
Yeah, so Larry's gonna arrange for us to have the special VIP tour, it sounds like.
Yeah, that's right.
Awesome. I'll certainly look forward to that. Um I want to be brief tonight, I because I wanted to um accentuate thanks to Bobby Abner. Um the stuff that the, I don't know if he's still on, but the day is, John. Um I know I'll bump into them here and there, and I'll thank them when I see them uh for the time being. If you could thank them from all of us, uh we certainly appreciate his efforts in stepping up there. The value to the future from our educational programs there are invaluable, um and they're really unquantifiable. And I hearken back to the one time I volunteered with one of the field trips years back. And it was really a joy. Um I mean, I don't get a lot of paid time off um like some of you get. But uh it was a pleasure to be part of it that one day, and it was a great sunny day, a spectacular day on the creek. And later that night, I had something I had to do at Beach Elementary School. My kids were still in school back then. It's a little while back now. Um but I I vividly remember some of the kids that were there that evening had been on the field trip that day. And the things that they were talking about and the perception, the the increased awareness that they have for for our environment um is precisely the things that that we want to try to lead in. And and I and I thank John and all of the volunteers there um for stepping up and to continue to carry that forward. Uh my last comment, uh I think the mayor brought this up earlier, um and I hear the jingle bells. I mean, wow, Light Up the Town is 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 kind of around the corner here. Just hear those slave bells ringling. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. So um yeah, I just want to echo some of what what Greg was saying. You know, kudos to to John Bacon and the Sea Box team, and and thank you very much, Bobby Abner. That's amazing uh what they have done, they how they overcame that adversity. Just splendid work, you know, life life gave them lemons and they didn't make lemonade. They made lemon meringue pie out of that. So that was a really nice, uh amazing stuff. So thank you very much. The other thing I wanted to um reinforce was, I hope y'all, if you get a chance, can go hear Sam Drogey speak about pollinators. He is um he is an amazing person, excellent biologist, naturalist. I worked with him at the Eastern Ecological Science Center in Laurel. Um he was, he's been involved with the the North American Breeding Bird Survey. You know, years and years ago, he initiated um some lots of different um biological monitoring programs. One one involving, so he moved from birds into amphibians. He started the North American Amphibian Monitoring Program. He started Frog Watch. He um then moved on to insects and started the developing surveys for insects. And now he's currently working with bumblebees. He has a really cool book out um that ha that are photos of all kinds of native bumblebees. It's just spectacular uh photos of these, um if you get a chance to see that. But anyway, you should you should go and listen to them, important topic. And then finally, Happy Halloween to everybody. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, Keith. And on that wonderful note, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
All right, thank you all.
See you all.